So I'll start with the statement, this meeting is being convened by video conference and compliance with Governor Cuomo's executive orders, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal boards to convene meetings via video conferencing without in-person attendance by the public. In addition, the public has been provided with the ability to view, hear and participate in the meeting. A transcript will be provided at a later date. There is a quorum of the board members for this meeting. The link to the live stream of the meeting has been provided to the public and a video of the meeting will be made available on public access television, as well as a link on towns on the town's website. Further all submission materials and agendas are available to review on the town's website. Brought to you by Pleasantville. Thank you. Sorry about that. We'll bring the meeting to order and I'll close my windows. Okay, there was, there will still be another round of horn, so hang in there. In any event, let's call our first matter of this evening's agenda. And this is an informal appearance. This is for Hile 15 Hammond Ridge. This is an application for a site development plan approval for an in-ground and stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control pool. So Mr. Hile, you're here. Yes, there you are.
I'm here. I hope Chris Olson's here.
Uh.
He's the man.
Not yet.
Well, I'll just email him right now. Here, I'll call him.
Um, I did, I did speak with Chris this afternoon, if it helps, um, you know, we can move forward without him if need be.
Oh, he was just on. He was literally just on Zoom.
Yeah, we were in the middle of our executive session.
Yeah.
He was, he was here when he, when he shouldn't have been and now that we need him.
Chris, can you join?
Felicia's back too.
What's that? Okay, he's coming back in.
Sabrina, is it possible, could Felicia and Pam set up a separate link for us for the executive session at the end of this meeting? This, this not having a separate link was really a problem.
I can do that.
Thank you, Pam. And just email it to everybody or, or just put it in the chat and people can pick it up from there.
I will.
Thank you, Pam.
There, Chris is on, so we are good to go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're starting our project now?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, this is our second informal planning board. We've submitted some revised plans. There's a couple revisions. We've also submitted a set of drainage plans completed by Hudson Engineering. Michael Stein from Hudson is going to be on, or he was on, and I just sent him a text.
I just, I just logged on. There I am.
There he is.
Thank you.
All right. I guess I'll share my screen and show you guys revised plans.
Yep. Yep, if you could go through the changes that you're proposing from the last time we looked at this.
Okay. Okay. So, um, the, the biggest, the main changes for since the last application is, uh, we updated the plant list based on recommendations from Dennis. And we added quite a few plans to the areas that we're going to remove the lawn and naturalize them. That was one big thing.
So those are two pink areas, right? Right, north and south.
That's right. So we're going to get rid of the existing lawn and replace it with the seed mix and some trees and some native bushes.
How much space is that, that you've proposing to change that and change for the clearing grading line lines and eliminate from lawn area?
A little over 11,000 square feet.
Great, thank you.
So substantial area. We had previously had shown a rain garden near the equipment pad. But after Hudson Engineering did their calculations, it was deemed that we didn't really need the rain garden, at least from a drainage standpoint, and putting the upper driveway runoff into a coltech system along with the runoff from the proposed pool patio. So it's all going to go into underground coltechs in the backyard. So that actually saves quite a lot of money for the client for not having to do the rain garden. Instead, we're putting that money into plants in the naturalized areas and a few extra coltechs. I think that was the main changes from our last presentation.
Okay, did we, we talked last time, and I can't recall which way it was, we talked about the possibility of changing the configuration of the pool. Uh, I think there was some issue about needing to blast and whether it might be pivoted or at least changing the, the deep end flipping that, or is that still the same?
We left the orientation of the pool the same, yes. I guess when we excavate, if we do hit rock, then maybe we could discuss flipping the pool there and saving money on rock chipping. But I think this is the preferred orientation of the pool.
Okay. This is Darren, for what it's worth, um, so the house kind of sits up on top of what was the original hill. And if you get further away from the house, the ground is more fill. So where the deep end right now is likely to be the best place for it, because further away you get from the house, the less there's likely to be rock there, if that makes sense.
Sure, okay. Okay, good. Sabrina, you had some thoughts and comments on the application?
Sure, um, for the board's information, um, it is a type two action in accordance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Um, the applicant did show the coverage calculation drawings on the plan set now. That was a comment last time. There does need to be a zoning conformance table, um, which was missing from this plan set. Last time it was requested that the two acres, um, that the one, that the, that our one acre setbacks be shown and that the two acre setbacks be taken away. They're in the table, but they're not on the plans, you know, to show where those setback distances are on the plans is what was requested as well. Um.
S2 shows those. In the blue light here, that's your setbacks as shown in the zoning tape.
Oh, okay, so then they're there. That's satisfied. And then the other is that, um, the, there's no alternative to shown here. They've shown one alternative. Um, and the biggest issue for the planning board really relies on the coverage calculations. I spoke with Chris this afternoon about making sure his coverage calculation totals reflected the actual coverage and were calculated properly, but the, this lot had a coverage limit when it was initially approved. Um, and at this point in time, we're looking at a 2,322 square foot overage. Um, the, the applicant is proposing to convert existing lawn area into mitigation plantings. I had asked that these areas be quantified, so the planning board has some sense of area that is being proposed for mitigation for the overage, but ultimately the planning board needs to determine whether or not they're comfortable with the coverage as it's being proposed, or they're looking for a reduction in that coverage and whether or not the mitigation is satisfactory.
If the area of lawn being returned is 11,400, that's stated on S2 on the proposed site plan.
Was there also a reduction in asphalt on the driveway somewhere?
We had proposed, and there was two alternative plans included. One involved taking out the asphalt driveway and just putting in like two dry, like tire strips of stone.
Yeah, we all, we all thought that didn't work out.
Yeah, it's a hill. It's not desirable whatsoever.
Right.
So then we came to, to this plan as a, as our compromise instead.
Yeah, we were hopeful that this would work instead. Getting rid of our driveway wouldn't be great.
Yeah, that makes, that makes no sense, at least in my opinion, but. So at the top, are we doing something with the asphalt at the top up there? Did we cut it back? Is that what we did? I thought I read somewhere that we, we made some change in the driveway, not the strips, but somewhere we made some sort of reduction.
Well, we picked up the runoff off of the top area of the driveway.
Okay.
There's like a crest in the driveway itself, so half the driveway pitches down to the entrance and the other half pitches like towards the garage and towards the catch basin that's in the corner of the driveway. So we're going to pick up that runoff instead of letting it go to daylight.
I also wanted to mention that, um, they are proposing a change in the clearing grading limit line and they will need to provide a subdivision plan, uh, to memorialize that change in the clearing grade limit line.
Um, just, just a clarification, um, not a subdivision plat or just a location for the line that survey located. But the actual amendment can be, um, published through a declaration recorded in the county clerk's office, um, with the, the survey of that line. But it's not a subdivision.
I meant it was an actual map, a plat.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
Okay. So the main thing is whether or not we feel from Sabrina's points is whether we feel comfortable with the exceedance of the development in exchange for the switching for, you know, lawn area back to more of a natural area. Uh, okay. Um, and let's see, Bob, you had some comments also?
Uh, yes, sir. Basically, sort of with stormwater comments, I had some technical comments with the, with the pre-development peak runoff. I always like to see tables which clarify the peak runoff and the peak runoff volume. So it's very easily to see if there's a runoff reduction, which there is in this case, obviously, but I'd like to see a table nonetheless. The water quality volume should be its own entity prior to the introduction into the infiltrators. I'd recommend at least 25% be put into some solid tank where the sediment can settle out before it goes into the infiltrators. It does make the infiltrators last a lot longer as far as wear and tear and maintenance. And also too, I had some discrepancies on the areas, actually, that was a little bit over about by 300 square feet based on what your CAD shows. I would recommend that you clearly show on a table box out with blowups on exactly where these areas are, so I can better get a better handle on it and the report. And also to show the slot drain to pick up the water to me is the most important conveyance system. There wasn't much I would recommend. I would almost guarantee when they build this patio, they're going to have everything pitched out from the pool coping outwards in all directions. So I'd recommend that you show current drain, slot drain around the total perimeter of the pool to ensure that all the runoff goes into where it should be going into the collectors and not into the grass. Uh, also to a maintenance schedule should be shown on the stormwater on the plan as well, so the homeowner knows that they're responsible and how to maintain these infiltrators from, uh, in perpetuity. And obviously, it's Sabrina's point, also too, there was a, um, over 5,000 square feet of disturbance, so they'll have to get a SWIP from DEC on this because it's in the East of Hudson watershed. Those are my stormwater comments, and I have a couple of general comments. Obviously, they're changing the clearing gradients, so they'll have to submit a declaration with an amended clearing grading limit line map that's attached there to and filed down in Westchester County. Uh, and then GC2 is basically just general notes I like to see on all the plans. So there's no confusion on what has to be submitted prior to a CO, i.e., as built in stormwater certifications in this particular case. And that ends my comments for tonight.
Bob, were you comfortable if we were so, you know, inclined to move this forward? All these could be conditioned in a resolution?
I have no objection with that.
Okay, terrific. Dennis, you had some comments also?
Yes, um, so my, my apologies in that, uh, red stem, red twig dogwood is the common name for three different species of dogwood and two of those three, they've, taxonomists have been playing around with changing some of the species, so I didn't pick this up initially, but, um, hopefully not to lose my Latin license, I would just recommend that, uh, just substitute for that one species that you have recommended for red twig dogwood. Everything else is native and acceptable. And then obviously, since these are going to be new plantings, you probably should include, uh, you know, just some of the schematics for like deer fencing or some form of herbivory protection, because you want, you're going to definitely want to protect these plantings after they're, they're installed.
Dennis, what's your recommendation for a maintenance period on this, or standard five years?
Yeah, that's, that's reasonable, yes.
Okay. All righty, any other questions from the board members?
Um, I have a comment and a question, small question. Thank you for providing the views, which show that, uh, pretty much in all directions of concern relative to the pool, it's heavily vegetated and therefore shouldn't be a problem relative to neighbors and things like that, situations like that. My minor question is that, that how will the pool be empty? Will it be empty into the ground or will it be taken away by truck?
Um, well, each winter when the pool is drained down below the skimmers, I guess we could put that water into, uh, coltechs. Or it could be released to the lawn as well. After you don't put chemical in the pool for a week, there's basically no chemical and um, it would be fine to release it to the lawn, if that's okay.
Yeah, well, generally, I know sometimes the planning board, Dennis, chime in anytime you like, but usually we'd like to see some sort of plumbing system put into the pool mechanism. So when they do the drawdown, which is generally about six to seven inches based on the pool area, that will go into the infiltration system and perk into the ground as opposed to going across the lawn. Yeah, that's the planning board's call. They can make the call on that. That's what I recommend.
I agree, Bob, in that, and that, uh, then might change the calculations on how big the, the system is, but maybe not.
Yeah, I would think, I, I would think, and I did check that, uh, that the drawdown does not control the sizing. It's.
We have very, very favorable infiltration rate, so that's not going to be a concern.
Good.
Okay, thank you. I can, we can easily add a pipe up with a pool pump that can push the water to the coltechs, no problem.
Good, okay. Did you, uh, any other questions, Dick?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, anyone else?
Uh, yeah, Bob, I have a, Sabrina, maybe you could help me out here. Uh, I have a problem with the coverage. Uh, can you, uh, tell us again, Sabrina? The, I meant was, uh, over 2,000 square feet over the allowable coverage? Did I get that right?
Yeah, so, so just in 2003, the planning board approved, um, the development coverage at 8,225 square feet with a 15% increase up to a maximum of 9,459 square feet. That was what was approved when, when the, um, when the lot was created. The, right now, there's existing development coverage of 10,302 square feet, which is 843 square feet over the maximum allowed, 15%. They're requesting an additional 1,479 square feet for the project that's before you today. So there would be a total development coverage on the site of 11,781 square feet, which is a 2,322 square foot overage from their upper maximum limit, um, as approved by you at, um, 10,302, no, at 9,459.
459, right. Yeah, thank you, thank you. So that's like roughly 20% more or less.
It's 25%.
So, uh, I've got a real problem with that, and I, I just, I, you know, I don't know why, uh, the town board makes these regulations, um, if they don't mean them. And, um, I happen to think that it's our job to be sure that, that the regulations that the town board legislates, the, the code that it legislates, it's true that we are given some discretion, but to me, 25% over is going way beyond what is appropriate discretion in this case. And the proposed mitigation of, well, you know, we will return some lawn area to, uh, to natural landscape and we'll change some grading, uh, during limit lines. I, I don't see that as mitigation for coverage. I mean, that's like, those are two different buckets entirely to me. I mean, I, that's like saying that, it's like putting a, an orange in a bushel of apples and calling that orange an apple. It just doesn't make sense to me. So I'm, I'm against, I'm very much against this, uh, this ask for this much increase in coverage. I think that we've gone way beyond what, what is our responsible discretionary powers on this one if we grant it.
If I may clarify something?
Sure.
Okay, the, the maximum permitted 9459, um, actually within the property line, we are slightly below that. But when you add the additional driveway area, that's actually technically on the neighbor's property, that's what takes you over that maximum threshold. Does that make sense?
It does. And what is the net area of that driveway that is in the, which is on the, I guess there's an easement on the neighbor's property for that drive, that section of the driveway?
Yeah, Bob and, Bob and us actually worked this calculation out, uh, this end of last year. It's actually 962 square feet of asphalt that's technically on the neighbor's property also counts towards the coverage of this property.
It does technically?
Uh huh, yeah.
Yeah, that's really what puts us over on existing coverage.
Yeah, well, then it does, which over.
So the pool project itself is. Change in that, um, that approach, if you're going over someone else's property, you know, then, uh, you can't give all of the development coverage to that person whose property you're going over. You know, type of thing, that's not fair. So it has to be to whoever wants it, needs it. And I, was there, did, I forgot what was said a few minutes ago, I think, on shaving the width of the driveway, did anything happen or go forward with that or?
Um, well, the, the new pool project itself and patio is 1,479 square feet, so that's really what we're asking for in additional. We did propose an alternative, uh, plan that showed stripping the asphalt out and just putting two like tire strips of stone.
What, what's the driveway width right now? Is it 12, is it 12 feet? 14, 10?
Give me a second.
I think Dick's question is whether or not it could be, whatever it is, is it possible to reduce it and that will give you some additional, uh, area to work with. I know it sounds a little bit ridiculous perhaps to an applicant, but I, just to remind the applicant, this entire development was a conservation development. It was deemed to be, um, you know, environmentally sensitive and for various reasons, it was developed in this manner with these kinds of constraints. And, and, and that's really part of the concern. So it is considered to be a sensitive area. And that, I think, is, is part of what Tom is talking about and, and in some of that context, that's important to understand.
It looks like the driveway is just maybe 10 feet, a little over 10 feet.
So Bob, Bob Ciolli, there's no real room there, is there? Uh, don't you have to have it 10 feet wide?
I would think that would be problematic, Chairman, because if the driveway was 12 to 14 feet, they might have a little bit more wiggle room, but cut it down two feet to eight, it's kind of tight. They're probably going to be coming off the driveway most of the time and creating more erosion.
Yeah, and they also have some curves on the driveway too, so it's, I think you need some extra width for some of that navigation.
Yes. Yeah, that's, that makes it complicated.
Yes.
What's, what's around the pool? Is that a paved area?
Yeah, it's a, we're going to do three feet of stone on all sides of the pool, which is pretty, um, pretty modest and minimal, um, in terms of, you know, walkway around the pool.
Well, I mean, uh, how many square feet is that? 200 square feet, 300?
Uh, 422.
422, well, that should go away and maybe the pool should be made smaller.
Is that, by the way, is that a hot tub you see to the south on the pool?
Yeah.
Okay. And the flagstone patio, is that existing or is that going to be constructed?
Uh, the one in black and white that's existing.
Thank you.
What goes on? How do you use the flagstone podium patio? Is it used for parties outdoors, just here?
Yeah, we just, that's our outdoor sitting area, you know, we have barbecue out there and yeah, sit down and enjoy the weather.
Yeah, sure. That's perfectly, I would think that was almost a necessary accessory to the, to the house. I think we, probably most of us, if not all of us, have some kind of a patio associated with our home.
Sure.
Well, can we, can we, uh, is there anything, Bob, is there anything we can do, uh, you know, with, let's say, the stones that have the grass growing in it that actually, you know, gives a realistic credit? Because it's not a driveway, so it's not going to get pounded. You get, be walked on, that's all.
Well, the problem you have with development coverage, it's got to be, it can't be anything man-made on the ground. I mean, okay, I think someone mentioned this, like Bob might have mentioned this, I mean, if the planning board wishes to do so, take away the patio around the pool, so I mean, you kill two birds with one stone. If you do that, you may, might not need stormwater. And then you wouldn't have the overage, so it might be a feasible thing to do, but that's up to the planning board to decide to remove the patio around the pool.
Well, as, as Tom has said, this is, this is a big ask and a very, very carefully planned out develop, subdevelopment.
If you take the, take the patio, I think you drop it 422, right, Chris?
Yes.
So I mean, that's, that's not a bad idea to go, you know, planning board makes that goal, but it's not a bad idea.
Was that, are you talking about the patio, Bob, that's, that's existing or the stone around the pool?
Yeah.
The stone around, stone around the pool would eliminate 422.
Yeah, we've done that before. I, I think we've approved pools where we just had the coping and it went straight to grass.
That is correct. A lot of people.
Like this, yeah.
A lot of people like the idea because it drops them below 1,000 and a lot of times they don't need the stormwater, but I don't know if it's going to do it in this case. I don't think so, but it helped the development coverage.
Well, that, it, it will, and 422, uh, would be, would be a help, but, uh, we're still like, what? 1,700 over, 1,800 over?
Yeah, they're about 1,800. Uh, well, with the impervious 1,800, I don't know what development coverage is, Sabrina. What was the development coverage over?
It's 20, it would be 2322 over.
That's quite a bit, yeah.
Yeah, and then 422, it makes, it makes a dent, but you're still 1,900.
It's.
And they're already 800, over 800 square feet over, uh,
Correct.
Violation.
843 square feet over without the project.
Oh, without the project, okay.
We bought the house a year and a half ago. We had no idea of any of this stuff.
Yeah, this, this happens a lot, to be quite honest with you, where, where, you know, somebody else inherits somebody else's work, so to speak. But the, the total overage with the project is 2,322 square feet.
Right.
Well, how big is the area that's going to receive trees and, uh, sort of like mitigation area?
About 11,000, right?
7,400 square feet.
Talking about the, the trees that are going to be planted.
We'll be removing 11,000 square feet of lawn, replacing it with trees, bushes and New England seed mix.
Well, I think, I think that if it's, if it's going back to, to a wooded area as opposed to an open area, you know, that's, uh, that's a positive relative to the, um, the overall goals of this subdivision. So there should be some credit for that, but I don't know exactly how we would, uh, what the right calculation is.
Right. Right.
So let's go back to um, might be helpful. And you know, maybe everybody wants to go away and consider this. Maybe the applicant wants to go away and see where they can chip away. At some of the coverage uh, which is maybe unnecessary. To their enjoyment of the property. Uh, and the planning board can think about whether actually. It's a fair trade um, to do landscape uh, in trade for coverage. I'm, I'm just not sure. And one of the things I think that the. Planning board ought to do is to take a look at. What really is the justification for a total development coverage limit? I mean, what's the criteria for that? Why, why is it on the books? And uh, understand better what specifically the reasons why that criteria is on the books. And find out whether this particular application of it is um. You know, sort of meets that standard or whether there are ways in which we can be a little bit lenient.
Well, we can do that, but I'm also sure that the applicant would love to get some direction from us and, and move forward. My sense is that uh, we do have nine hundred and sixty-two feet that's off-site. It is counted toward. There, we, we do this all the time. That's just, that's just part of the code. So the nine sixty-two is counted. But in a way, it's, it's another piece of property. Perhaps uh, giving some sort of uh, recognition of the nine sixty-two off-site. And perhaps if the applicant did something with the coping around the pool, reduce the uh, by four hundred. Uh, then we have uh, this eleven thousand uh, square feet of, of area being returned. Uh, I, I think on balance, uh, I would be inclined to, to work with the applicant and, and uh. Uh, figure out a way to, to approve that kind of mix.
Well, that, that might be fine, uh, but um. Where does that nine hundred and sixty-two square foot, square feet of coverage go? It doesn't disappear. If it doesn't get counted on this piece of property, I would think it would have to be counted somewhere. Sorry, I'm sorry, Bob. I'm sorry. Which would be that it would go to the property uh, that it actually is on, and that doesn't seem fair to me.
Well, they've already got their pool for what it's worth, so.
Maybe, maybe they want to put in a tennis court.
Well, actually, so Sabrina, by the way, how would that be counted? Uh, you know, we're not going to name names, but to the parcel to, to the south. When they go for their calculations, is that land, is that driveway counted on theirs as well?
So, so typically when you have a shared driveway situation, if you have three houses, the, the first house pays for that first. One third of that first leg, if you will. The second house on the line will, will, that, that stretch will be divided by two. Right? Cause the first house has fallen off. So first stretch is divided by three who access it. The second house is divided by two who access it, and then the last house has a portion of the entire way.
But there's only one house here, that this driveway is serving, is that correct?
I don't know, is that correct? I don't know.
The, the bottom part of the driveway feeds to two different houses.
Right, and so that. That portion of the driveway is divided three ways. It's different how you calculate the percentage of impervious towards each of the lots. That's different than the actual where the driveway is running off into.
Well, so by that, I, I don't know whether that applies to, if those, if that principle applies to building coverage.
Yes, it does.
Okay, so then from the intersection, the Y intersection to the other house, all of that area. So essentially, all of the area which is in orange in this section of driveway. Is the area which would be attributable to the applicant.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's a total of the nine hundred and.
And that is the nine sixty-two then, okay.
Yes, that's the nine sixty-two.
So it's half, I see half of it going up to the Y and then everything after the Y, got it?
Correct.
Well, okay, back to the, you know, to the return to the wild on the vegetation. Uh, I think it's a lot of, of extra uh, area that's going to be returned, particularly. If. You know, if it's somehow on the north end of this drawing. Uh, I don't know what the property looks like there and, and you know, whether that would have but uh, in equally. Uh, an equal area over there. Not that I'm asking someone, this, this applicant to put trees on the neighbor's property, but. My sense is that if it's, I thought it's eleven thousand square feet, is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay. That would support some reasonable habitat. I mean, maybe bunnies and little critters. So I, I'm, I'm certainly interested in, you know, what would be a reasonable ratio. If it's eleven thousand and we do it, you know, uh, you know, four feet, four square feet of this versus one square foot of the uh. The overage. Uh, you know, you're getting close to the point where you're, it's, where it's all in balance. I would, if that's going to be a major factor, which I think it should be given consideration for. You know, then I would want to go to a ten-year maintenance plan for, for those trees. To make sure they really get in there solid and they just don't accidentally die from lack of water or whatever else. You know, so that it does. Become adult kind of trees and um, and will serve the uh, property for decades.
So there's, there's no proposal, thank you Dick, there's no proposal to change the clearing and grading limit lines to the east? I know the septic is down that hill.
Oh yeah, that's, that's like a pretty steep hillside going down and then the septic is down there. There's no proposed anything down that way.
I mean, except for access to the, the septic, uh, couldn't that area also be reforested then? Um, and uh, if it's steep, I don't know if it's grass or lawn or if it's just rubble or whatever. Perhaps those clearing and grading limit lines could be pulled substantially to the west and bring them up to the post and rail fence that you're proposing for. The pool, which is probably your usable area anyway in terms of lawn. And uh. Uh, perhaps that change would help uh, help the mix as well.
So um, just to explain how the yard works to the. You, you see like a little line going down from the. Backyard to an area that, that's the septic. Everything else around there is woods. So if you look sort of. Um, you see how the, the contours show how steeply it goes down sort of to the right of where the lawn is. That's all woods. Everything going down there is woods and trees. And only that dotted line that sort of shows. To the back there, that's just a, a cleared area for septic. Cause we understand that um, you're supposed to, where the septic is, you're supposed to sort of keep that mode. But everything else is woods.
Well, I have to say, I'm starting to get persuaded the more I think about um. The uh, uh, the addition of this uh, landscape. The number of trees, uh, Dick, thanks for pointing that out again. In these locations. You know, I, you know, I think that that, that really is a positive benefit. What, could you help me out here on the plan? Looking at the lower right-hand corner where the proposed landscape mitigation, that, that purple, the pink uh. Area between that, yeah, thank you. Between that area and the driveway, what's in there?
That's woods. And on the other side of it is woods too.
And could you, maybe you already explained this. Why is that area, pink area need to be its existing lawn?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's an odd shaped situation, isn't it?
It's really weird. I don't know why it's like that um.
If you'd like to stop here on your screen, I can, I can put up the aerial of uh, showing all the wooded areas.
Yeah, you can uh, actually you can see on this picture here. Um, there's the swing set, which is pretty close to the driveway and you can see the lawn just kind of shoots back there in a slim, in a pretty. Slender line back over to the property line. Let's see in here. Yeah.
So the proposal is to go ahead and fill that in and return it to natural landscape eventually?
Yes. Do you guys want to see the aerial? Michael, you want to?
That's okay. No worries. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to see the aerial. You can have it ready, handy.
Okay, Michael, I'm gonna stop and hand it over to you.
I just confirm you, everyone sees it.
Got it.
So this is, this is the area right down. Uh, on the southern side of the house that extends down. Let me see if I can even switch to two thousand sixteen, if that helps a little bit more.
Yeah, you can see the swing set there on that one.
Okay.
But the lawn just sort of stops and then it hits trees before it goes to the neighbor, so.
Yeah, I can see that. I saw it on the uh, the ground level photos too.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and uh, I'm sorry, could you go back to your hill now that I said it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
To see it again. Just real quick.
Same price.
Uh, the area to the uh, upper left that you are going to reforest, right?
That's right.
Yeah, I think that, and is that going downhill to uh, Haven Ridge Road?
Yes.
You know, I, I think that that would be a, a real positive benefit also. To further sort of screen the house and uh, from the road. And so I think that would be a positive, a positive move.
Then also you can see how forested the septic area is too. You sort of see the path going down and then it's mostly trees down there.
Well, I think you're making all the right decisions when it comes to, to landscape.
What's the terrain by the driveway? Why can't the uh, the driveway? Be flattened out so that it doesn't go on the neighbor's property? Is the, is it really steep between the driveway and the road?
You can see the contours right here.
Yeah. There you go.
Yeah, well, this is, this isn't so bad. It's until you get here, but it's. I don't know.
It'd be really steep and it's all rock, yeah.
Yeah.
All rock doesn't appeal to me. All right.
Yeah. And, and, and having another driveway cut very close to the other driveway is probably not optimal either. Happens all the time, but it's not, not often.
Well, remember it's two acres, two acre zoning, so it uh. It's certainly going to be similar to path acre zoning and driveways.
Yes, yes.
All right.
So what are the, are we, what direction are we giving the applicant so we can move this forward and they can?
Well, I think we're asking, from my point of view, asking him to uh, do two things. You know, one, cut back on uh, what he wants to build. And then secondly, work with uh, maybe Dennis, uh, and I'm not sure who else uh. Uh, as to what should be the value, uh, you know, of. The green spaces that are going to be reforested. And see if that's a trade-off. It's certainly still going to be outside of our rules to a certain extent because the foresting is not. Uh, the grass and the foresting are the same as far as development. But given that this is a conservation area, the more that it has better habitat. Then I think it has value and it's not a, I don't think it's a one-for-one value, but. Two to one, three to one, four to one, something like that.
Makes a very, very good point.
Now, Dick, when you mentioned cut back on the proposal, you're talking about the, the coping and the flagstone around the pool?
Yeah, that's one thing for sure. Make the pool smaller. Does it have to be exactly this long?
So I, I would ask uh. In respect of that, I, I don't think that, if I may, I don't think that. Taking the paving around the pool is actually. Very reasonable because I think in the end, either this homeowner or, or, you know, not casting aspersions on this. Over the, the next homeowner is going to say, wait a minute, I want to, you know, I want to pave it around my pool and gonna go ahead and do it anyway. So I would, I would suggest that. If it's likely to be done anyway, that we go ahead and approve it, so it's not a problem. Um, it doesn't become a, you know, a violation of any kind one day. It just seems like a reasonable thing to do. Uh, with respect to the size of the pool, I don't, I don't know whether, I mean, how do we decide how much smaller is enough? You know, I mean, I, it, is, is, are we just sort of asking for something because we want to ask for something? Or would it really make that much a difference to cut it down by a hundred square feet or two hundred square feet? Would it make that much difference to us?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good question and my response would be probably not. I, I think on balance would be asking too much on the part of the applicant frankly. So I'm um.
In, 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 in consideration of the, of the improvements to the landscape and the conservation area.
Yes, absolutely.
Right.
Absolutely, yes.
I, I, I think uh. So, sorry Dick, did you want to go ahead? Maybe not. Uh, so I, I'll go. Tom, I, I, I think your point about the, you know, the paving around the pool is, is spot on. I mean, that was my thought. Uh, the whole time that, you know, if we ask that to be taken away, it, it'll find its way there, like you say. This owner, the next owner, I mean, it's, it's going to be there, right? I mean. It's, I think it's incredibly rare to have a pool that doesn't have some sort of paving around it. And so that, that'll find its way there. So I, I don't know that that's necessary and. You know, it's, it's not really make or break. And to Dick's point about the value, quote unquote, of. You know, uh, reforested land versus lawn, I, I think is an excellent point, right? I mean, uh, when we're talking about building coverage. There's, you know, building coverage and not building coverage, but it's not all equal. And so. Um, the idea of reforesting, you know, a, a good portion of this land, I think it is um, a. A, a pretty reasonable sort of give back in exchange for the request being here. The quest is definitely significant that we, we shouldn't kid ourselves. And I think, Tom, you brought that up nicely at the beginning, but um. You know, sometimes it feels like people come to us expecting. Us to demand more and so they, they withhold, but perhaps that isn't the case here with this applicant and this application in the sense that. They've offered something that may be a fair trade-off, right, for, 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 for the ask and um, you know, I'm. Uh, I mean, you guys know me, I'm usually inclined to, to find a way to get to yes. Uh, you know, this is. Uh, I don't think, in, in concept, not an unreasonable ask, just a way to kind of, you know, kind of offset and mitigate what's being requested. And so, uh, uh, you know, and I, I think when we're also being realistic, like you said, Tom, about what is realistically going to happen here over time. We should shape this as best as possible and then kind of set it on its way and say, enjoy.
Yeah, I agree with all of that, El Dad, and I, I think it would be important in the resolution that we. We are very clear about making the point of the, the uh, extra value. And I think there is extra value of the mitigation proposed in this conservation area. Right, that, that gives us the, the, the justification um, to make this exception. In this particular case, so that people don't come back and say, well, gee, you know, you gave it to them, why don't you give it to us?
All right, thank you, Tom. That's exactly the, the point that I also wanted to make is, 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 is sort of the precedent that, that we would set. And so we have to be very clear and intentional and, and, and completely agree. I mean, there is a big difference between like a manicured lawn. The val, you know, the value, quote unquote, of a manicured lawn and a uh, more natural habitat and um. And so by making that distinction, I think we are sort of protecting ourselves from. Uh, you know, future applicants saying, give me, give me what you gave them, but without necessarily offering the same in return.
Yep, I agree with that and I still would like to see some sort of reduction of the uh. Uh, the footprint, particularly since. Somebody went over the uh, numbers without asking, as far as I can tell, so. You know, something has to be cut back. That's hard stand. That's my view.
Um, and so Dennis? And so Dennis?
The pieces, one small, one big, maybe they all fit.
Dennis, I, I, I know you're diligent on all of these things. I think that it's great that you're sort of on top of this with respect to the proposed restoration, if you will, areas. And I think it'd be good if we just sort of were sure that we were really drilled in on that to be sure that we're doing everything which is, has a reasonable chance of success with, with respect to species and all of those other things to make this, to, to make this really, to build on the conservation concept here and to increase the habitat.
Right. And not only that, but some of the concepts that frankly, the, you know, orientation of the property and just how it exists. There is sort of this, you know, added benefit of kind of restoring, you know, this contiguousness of that habitat. So if you were to, you know, move away from just looking at does column A equal column B in terms of, okay, we got coverage here, we're gonna plant this. But in the aerial, obviously, I think highlighted this, that, you know, you're, you're not just taking away lawn areas, but you're sort of just expanding those areas, corridors, uninterrupted natural areas that yeah, the, you know, wildlife that, you know, wouldn't be considered, you know, tolerant and commensal of, you know, landscaping and, and human presence. You know, are more likely to take advantage of that. So I guess to, to, to Mr. Brownell's point, you know, I, you would, you would almost quantify that differently, or at least look to apply that differently as opposed to just taking some general patch of lawn and jamming it with trees and shrubs. You know, you're doing that, but it's not necessarily having this value added benefit.
So you're essentially closing, you're essentially closing intrusive gaps in the, in the conservation area.
Right. I, you know, unless someone is, is a hunter and prepares a clear shot, you know, I think it's a, it's a good idea at the end of the day.
Thank you.
Yep, it's enhancing their connectivity, which is terrific. That's always a benefit. Well, I, I agree with Tom and Eldad. And I, I really don't see and don't forget, we've also had all the stormwater mitigation that Bob is working on with Mr. Stein. So in addition to the landscaping, I think we have a very good plan in terms of mitigating stormwater and probably improving the situation that we have now. So I'm not so sure. I, I agree with your comment that we need to do something here just because we, we sort of just need to do something here. I, I'm okay with what's being proposed and I would agree with Eldad and Tom and their comments. If, if I could see if someone could convince me that whatever it is that we would pull back on, maybe enhancing the clearing grading limit lines further, I don't know. Perhaps something like that, but I'm okay with, with what's being proposed.
But to right now, there's a three foot stones laid down next to the pool. And I don't see why it has to be three. So it could be cut to one and a half, for instance.
Okay.
You know, so there are other things like that that could be done too. For us to just sort of say, well, okay, let's just do all trees without trying to, you know, control the size of the project, I think is not the way I would do it anyway.
Well, this is informal. Is that right, Bob?
Yes, it is.
So there, there is at least one more step that we need to go to with working with, with Bob Cioli on this, the applicant working with Bob, I believe. And if the applicant, my suggestion is the applicant is, is willing to consider honoring Dick Brownell's concerns, that would be great. And come back to us with a, a report on that. And we can maybe move forward on that basis.
Sure, I guess suggestion maybe as an alternative give back. Could you throw up that picture?
Which one?
The one of the backyard that shows the existing patio. So if you look at the existing patio.
That one?
Oh, I was thinking the, the map, just so I could point to the, the drawing, sorry. Yeah.
Okay.
So if you look up sort of the top, oh, perfect. So you see how there's a, if you sort of go up from the existing patio, you see this little thing that says flag steps there. And, and then there's a little walkway between that and the patio. I, we could give all of that walkway back and probably a little slice of the patio. And it would probably be more square foot than shaving off, call it 200 square feet of the walkway around the pool. Would, would something like that work potentially?
Sure, I, I'm, that would be fine by me.
Dick?
Well, I'm still looking for you know, something that's a, a net net, you know, that right now, the Darren's suggestion seems to be just to, to save the cowling around the, the, the pool at its current depth as three feet. Looking for something there that, that shows there that that doesn't cost a lot of money to do, maybe save some money. There. So I'm not looking to spend a lot of money. I'm trying to reduce the amount of money spent as, and we get the development coverage down a bit. I feel the need to get the developments coverage down because it's so far over. You know, that people would say, well, you didn't even ask, you know, to get something done. You know, as far as the cowling. I mean, does the cowling have to go all the way around the pool? You know, with three feet.
Dick, Dick, can I jump in here for a second?
Sure.
Because I, sorry, but I have to disagree with you, even though
Okay, you can.
Because I own a pool. I actually used to own it. Finally, you know, the kids weren't maintaining it. I wasn't using it, so I filled it in. But I used to have a pool and believe me, the, the total perimeter of that pool is going to be foot traffic. And it's going to be probably children running back and forth. And three feet to me actually sounds not only reasonable, but probably de minimis in this, or the minimum for the surround around a pool in a grassed in area. It seems to me it's entirely reasonable. And I just can't imagine a pool that, that, you know, has one side of it, grass or unpaved. Because that people are gonna be walking there too. I mean, they're gonna be going into the pool from there. And you don't want people going from the yard, from the grass into the pool, because then they bring stuff on their feet, you know, grass and leaves and so on, into the pool also. It's pretty essential, I think. So if there's still a concern that there, it seems to me we're making the ask that, that the applicant has offered the flagstone steps and that walkway that gets to that door there. You know, that, I, I think that that's a, to me, that's a, that's a nice offer. And we can say we did attempt to, and we did reduce the development.
I, I would concur with that, Tom.
So where are we?
Well, we're making progress, actually.
Well, we, we probably should schedule this for a public hearing next time around. And perhaps look at the plan with that revision that the applicant just offered. In terms of taking up that, those areas, see what those calculations come to.
Yep.
And have, as, as Tom mentioned before, have Dennis continue his work with the applicant on the species and the, and the setting and the spacing and, and also the maintenance plan. And see this for a public. And then again, working, there's some details that have to be worked on by the applicant with Bob on, on drainage, et cetera. But those could be conditioned. And my proposal would be to see what that looks like. But at the same token, schedule the public hearing with the idea that we'll see what those alternatives are. Schedule a public hearing and perhaps even have the staff prepare a draft resolution for us in anticipation of, of closing the public hearing.
If, if that's an ask for a motion, I'd go move.
Well, can I, can I, can I, can I say something though about a resolution? It's difficult if the plan isn't set. You draw up a resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see that.
Okay. So I think that's a fair point. And it might be difficult. So if, if worse came, worse situation, we might just have to you know, see the resolution the next time around, two weeks later, after we close the public hearing. So is there a motion then to schedule this matter for a public hearing?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Hi.
Hi.
And I guess what we need to do, Sabrina and Felicia, is just, what does it look like in terms of scheduling this for a public hearing?
I think it really will depend on the applicant and when they feel they can have revised plans submitted so that we can notice the public hearing on the revised plan set.
Right. So we meet again on what, the 18th? So the next meeting after that is what, June?
June 1st.
June 1st. Can you be, you think you can have everything in, in a week or so? And so we can look at this perhaps for June 1st?
May 10th is the deadline for the June 1st meeting.
It's next Monday.
Yes. If not, the June 16th meeting has a deadline of May 24th.
I guess my next question is the extent of the revisions actually needed, we need to
Very minor, isn't it?
Yeah, I think they're minor. I agree.
Yeah, we'll just show what we would give back in terms of the walkway to that other door and, and the existing patio.
Yep.
And maybe the, the, the walkway that's in the back of the garage too. Not to get rid of it, but you know, could you, if the pool comes in another foot, would you have maybe save a foot there and?
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, I have to think about, yeah, maybe.
I mean, so, so just in, in trying to think about timing here, right? You know, if the applicant can get plans by Monday, then it is possible that we could base a resolution off of those plans with the changes and then maybe tweak the resolution at the meeting.
That would be great, Sabrina.
Yeah. I'm just trying to think out loud here and trying to move them, uh, move them along without dragging.
Exactly.
Thank you.
All right. So, so if we can get everything by Monday, then we'll be able to formulate a resolution that's a little bit more specific regarding the mitigation.
Right, and schedule you for June 1 for a public hearing. So if that's, if that's doable, that's what we'll do. We'll try to schedule it that way.
I think I could do revisions and run prints and get it submitted for next Monday. I think we could do that.
Terrific.
Cause I'll be the one doing these revisions. It's not a whole lot, so.
Yep.
Maybe I could send the plans to Sabrina on Thursday or Friday for a review and then I'll run.
I, I'd rather you just submit them on Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we don't have time right now to do previews for, for folks.
Okay.
Just submit them. And, and if there are changes that are needed as of the meeting, we can amend the resolution accordingly and you can submit.
I have one, one, one last question. There's an access road. What, is that to, to get people in to, you know, do maintenance on the pool or is that?
Temporary construction.
That doesn't exist now. That would just be, I guess, for building the pool, right?
Right, temporary.
Temporary. Okay, good, thank you.
Oh, could I, while we have this thing in the, can I ask you something? You see at the bottom there by where it says access road, it says remove one dead tree.
Yes.
I haven't removed it yet, but I'd like to. It's very big and I'm worried it's gonna fall on the house. Is it okay that I remove it?
Dennis, is that okay? Do we have a, are you okay with that?
Gotta be okay. If it's dead, you don't need a permit.
Okay.
Right. I mean, if it's, you know, dead, everybody has sort of a different, different definition of that. But I think you showed a damaged tree, cause I see that on view number three.
Yeah, it's damn, I mean, it does have like, it leaves, but it's, it's damaged. And I had an arborist out there and he advised me to remove it. It's, um.
Well, I, I would say in consideration of, you know, you being here, you're gonna go to a public hearing? Why don't you just get me an application for it? And it's one tree and it's no notification and it's $30. And nobody has any issue going forward. Everything was done sort of administratively complete, I think. Just thinking ahead so that you don't have any issue with this particular application. I tend to just, you know, just think in those terms typically, that's all, to avoid any, you know, unforeseen circumstances. Not a problem.
Great, thank. Okay. Good. So we hope to see you on June 1 for a public hearing.
Thank you, everybody, for all your time and for being willing to work with us. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we move now next to our discussion. Memo summarizing board's comments on scene. Thanks to everyone who's made some comments on this. And thank you, Felicia, and thank you, Sabrina, for, and Jennifer for working on these drafts and getting them to us. I did get a note, Canaan's got some sort of personal issue with the family, so she couldn't join us this evening. She's offered to revise with some of her thoughts later on tonight, I guess, in, in writing. I'm not quite sure. We'll see how people feel. But personally, I would love to be able to finish this up this evening and be done with this and get this off. I think it's, it's been simmering for a while. And I think, I think some of this stuff is really, really good. And I think it's, it's, it's really just about ready. So anyway, why don't we go through this and the final draft? I think that would be best that we go through the final draft that we received this afternoon. I think that was after Jennifer did some work on it as well. And then we also have Jennifer's comments. And, and you know, why she inserted certain things, which I thought made overall made the very good sense. I wasn't able to figure out the color code, whose, whose color was assigned to what comments. But I don't think it really matters, because I think we have a draft here that we can really work on and try to finalize and finish up. So thank you, Eldad and Tom for working on the preamble and making this thing, I think, a little bit more positive sounding. And, and better. And go from there. So why don't we just do this? Why don't we just, you know, any comments to the first paragraph, let, let's just run through this thing. I mean, it's Yep, can you hear me? What, what's that? You know, by the way, can we, can we put it up? Do we, does someone have it so that we can put it up on, on the screen?
Excuse me, I have to, I have to come back in about five minutes.
Okay.
I, I am happy to share it. If you just give me a minute to download it, share it, and I can track changes so everyone can see it, if that's what you'd like me to do.
Yep.
Okay, give me two seconds. And I will be downloading the clean copy.
Right.
So while that happens, I'll just say that my comments are this. I like it. And I have one. I mean, you know, I, I, my, 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 I was charged with doing two things. One was making the preamble a little bit more positive. And I did what I thought was fair. And, and I mean, I'm comfortable with it and I like it. And then I also wrote the new social justice section, which was assigned to me by myself. And then the thought was whether you all would have any interest in signing on to that or not, that's to be discussed. The only comment for me on that was that, I guess, it was Jennifer who, who made some comments about either excluding these two lines or amending them. The clean copy excludes them. I'm comfortable with the amendment. I would love to bring them back in as, as suggested in the edits. And I understand why that was made and I'm okay with that. But, but it, it, there's sort of a larger discussion about the social justice section. If that's part of the memo at all or not, but maybe I'm just, maybe I'm jumping ahead. But I was also
I, I think you're jumping ahead. I know there's, there's other people. I don't know if Dick's back. He had some concerns about the social. I, I think you're jumping ahead. I know there's, there's other people. I don't know if Dick's back. He had some concerns about the social justice section. I'm not sure where he stands with that, so why don't we, um, go through and start and then hopefully he'll join on in when, before we get there.
Okay. Uh, in the first paragraph, um, this is wordsmithing. I would make the suggestion that in the, uh, second to last line, where we have comprehensive plan there, that we put a period there and because it just becomes a very long sentence, and just make a separate sentence. We commend the, uh, town board for making, for taking on this critical undertaking. This is a little bit more than wordsmithing, I think.
You want me to track changes as I go here? I'm sorry.
No. Well, you might, for, for, you might for Dick's purposes, if, because he's gonna, you might wanna look at this.
Alright, let me, let me undo what I just did.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, give, give me just a few seconds, too, because I have to re-log on with my other computer for some reason. It shut down.
Do we wanna take a five-minute break and let people go to the restroom if they need to, that type of thing?
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. Let's do that. I have to re-log on because something happened with the internet around here. Okay, let's do that. Let's take, uh, let's take a quick five. Thank you.
Okay, eight forty-five.
Yep. Yep, eight forty-five, we'll be back.
Okay, sorry, I'm, I'm back. Well, I'm not sorry, I'm back, but.
Dick, they're taking a, a five-minute break. They'll all be back at eight forty-five.
Oh, okay, fine. Sabrina, did you get my, my message? No, she's gone, too. Sabrina, I have a question.
Yes.
How many? Are we, have we satisfied the, the old, um, goal? I don't know how many affordable housing, uh, units. If we have, is that, that include Conover? Conover, yeah.
Conover, yes, it does.
Okay, good. Alright, and so how much are we over?
Not that much.
Not that much, okay. And how many other towns in West?
But, but the, the, the Coppola building does not count.
Why?
Cause it happened after that time period.
Pardon me?
It happened after the time period.
Oh, okay. Alright, but so.
So we're either there or just shy.
Alright, and how many other townships in, uh, Westchester, you know, up here in the, in the rural suburban area have managed to get to their goal?
I don't know.
Okay. And, but we're gonna keep going, right, with that goal as projects come along.
Well, that goal is no longer there. The county has not assigned a goal to a municipality. They have just put out a call for housing.
So Sabrina, there's a, a call for housing, uh, which is legitimate. I, I can appreciate that. From the county. And then there's also a, a uh, self-set criteria by the town. Is it self-set by the town for a percentage of, uh, a multifamily project to be affordable?
A sunset, did you say?
Self-set.
Um, that is a county recommendation on a required percentage of all new housing units to be affordable.
And so, uh, the, the, the town, uh, as a town adopted that as a, uh, set criteria?
We ha, we've adopted it in our single-family zoning districts and tonight the town board was considering it for our commercial districts.
But not for multifamily districts?
And for multifamily districts.
Okay, good, good. And, and you know what, and so what's the number there that they're looking at?
It's between five and nine units. Uh, one unit has to be affordable. Anything greater than nine or anything above ten, or ten or above is ten percent affordable.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are, are we all back?
Yeah, we're I, I'm extremely here.
Okay, very good, thank you. I am, uh, pleased to report I got my internet back, so I can actually read along with you folks as opposed to just on my phone.
Okay, so, um, just for folks who stepped away, I am track-changing as we go along. So everybody can see it on the screen. Can you see my screen and the colors?
Yep, yeah, thank you.
Good.
And, and, um, the, the next thought I would have is in the very last line there, again, this is a little bit more than wordsmithing. I don't think the FBC itself, uh, goes a long way to strengthen a town. I think that it provides the roadmap, uh, towards strengthening the town. It's, it's, it's a slight, uh, difference in meaning, but I think it's, it's critical. The code itself is not gonna do it. It's, it's gonna provide the roadmap or whatever someone else guidelines or whatever, guidepost. Uh, but I think that we should, uh, make that, uh, uh, change.
Would you wanna take it out or you wanna change?
No, I just wanna change is that the modified FBC could provide the roadmap towards strengthening this town.
Okay.
In the next, I have, uh, actually just very few things. It just seems to be at the beginning, sorry. Um, in the next paragraph, um.
Of Lynn Wood.
Yeah, that, yeah, right there. I have this real issue because I think, um, this word diversity has been used so many times that it's actually becoming meaningless. What really was going on, I think, was that, uh, the appropriate balance between the broad goals of, providing a broader range of housing options for underserved groups. I mean, that, I think, is almost verbatim from the plan. Um, and I know it certainly was verbatim from, uh, comments from people. And then it say, including multifamily, uh, walkability, preservation. I have no problems with all that. That's great. I love it.
That's good change. I agree with that.
Oh, how, how, can you?
I take out that housing diversity. Um, I just, for me, it, it rubs me the wrong way and I think it almost means nothing anymore. It's used too much. Uh, so instead, broad goals of including a greater range of housing options for underserved groups.
Works for me.
Broad goals of including a broader.
Range, range of housing options. Or underserved, uh, groups.
Yeah, that's good.
Now, the next thing is on the four lines. Well, let's see. No, no, that, that's okay. That's fine.
Sorry, I didn't put numbers on here.
Yeah, yeah, that's no problem. Down, uh, let's see, what, six lines down? One, two, three, four, five, six. I, I think we, we have to just put in, uh, the planning board is supportive of many of the primary concepts of the FBC. I don't know how we can say, not, not condition it when we're talking about process and architecture, um, as being problems. So I think we just have to modify that a little bit.
Yes.
And further down in that sentence, we note that the town board has worked in earnest with community, the community in many public, uh, working sessions over the last few months. I don't know why we're putting in to resolve such conflicts. Let's take that out and just find the, uh, the very balance for the final draft of the FBC. There's, I don't know why we have to bring that in. Uh, it's not resolve such conflicts and, and conflicts are not even mentioned, I, I don't think. So we're just balancing values. Uh, it's not necessarily a conflict. And if we're talking about conflicts because of folks being abrasive during the hearings, I don't think we really need to, uh, embrace that or bring that up.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't meant to be, uh, to be that. It was meant to be that, that, that there are, that, that are goals in the, they're, they're discovering through this process that the goals of the comprehensive plan are often in conflict with each other. And they're called, recall for resolution. That's, that's what it meant. But you can, it doesn't matter, just take it out.
Yeah, okay. Uh, in the next, uh, paragraph, uh, which is, excuse me, one after, processing of land applications. I think we should change the word could to should. And it's the, I don't, you know, this thing about a timely response to applications. I think instead it would be to facilitate a more efficient process.
I like the, yes, I like taking that out.
So I don't like timely response to the applications. I think we're very, quite timely, actually. It's just that it's a process that needs to be more efficient. And, and I, I think it should be stronger by saying should rather than could. And, uh, next one, town on property. I think we can take the word likely out, while no longer included. It is in fact no longer included. Uh, parking, I would just change not clear to unclear. And that's it for that page. Does anyone else have anything on that page?
Nope. That's all good.
Okay. Uh, next page, uh, and I'm almost, I'm almost getting close to shutting up. You doubt it, huh?
That'll be the day.
Hey, you know, it, it's all open.
Um, I like the word in the very first line, height and bulk. Instead of maintaining at the very last, I like the word preserving a hamlet character. Maintaining sounds too planning board-like. And again, um, I would remove the word housing because there, the goals of the comprehensive plan and even this hamlet plan are, are a lot broader than housing. So I would, I would suggest we remove the word housing. Uh, so the last sentence would be density is necessary to meet the comprehensive plan goals.
Wait, wait, now I'm lost.
Where are you?
No, he's at the end of height and bulk.
That's the last word of height and bulk.
Okay, got it.
And in the next little, uh, area, housing types, I would insert the word of, uh, assess the feasibility of alternative housing types.
Also, you need a comma after I, uh, E, I would say.
And it should probably be italicized.
Yep. Yep.
That's okay.
Yep. Okay, so that was, that's all I have on, on that. I, I thought you guys did a great job with that. Really terrific. So now we turn to the, this issue of, uh, social justice and Eldad's, um, uh, language in here and, and, uh, whatever. So.
Before we go there, I just wanna make sure that everybody else is okay with everything before this social justice section.
I'm good.
Eldad?
It's great.
Dick?
And, yeah, that's fine, and the Yeah, that's fine.
Well, can, can I just say, I mean, i- in the, you know, I, I completely agree that we should try to wrap this up ASAP. Um, I love Sabrina that you're, uh, kind of making these changes in real time and that so far we can, I'm super comfortable with Bob's changes. Um, you know, uh, Conan had sent that email saying that she's gonna send some comments later. Um, I don't know how we wanna deal with that.
And can we reserve that? Because, um, let's reserve that for a conversation if we get through this whole thing tonight.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Alright, let's talk about social justice.
Let's. Okay. Well, um, I'll, I'll, I'll give my take on it. I mean, the language is, is fine, but here's my issue with it. I think it's, um, I think it's, for me, and I think for the planning board as a planning board, not, not because of the five people, just as a planning board. I think it's a step too far, and I think it's something that, um, stands out, uh, very much inconsistent with the rest of the document and inconsistent with I, what I think was the charge or what the town board was looking for. I think this is something that really is for the political boards, political board. Um, I'm not saying I agree or disagree with any of the contents, but I just think it's, it's, uh, something that, from my standpoint, inserting it, inserting it here, and it's not necessarily the order, but in the document, it seems to be to outweigh somebody other, make this so strong. And we talked about this a couple of times. That shouldn't really be the flag that we, we wave on this, this project. It sort of wags the rest of, uh, the tail of the rest of the, um, uh, or makes the rest of the things that we've been talking about. The, 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 the tail on the dog. So by emphasizing this and introducing this here, I think it makes it, um, it makes the issues of context, of, uh, scale, of, uh, parking and all the other things that we talk about, well, that's tough luck. We have this overriding issue, which really wasn't the part of the, the form-based code necessarily. And the other issue I have is, by the way, is, uh, I, I don't, I don't see where there's this direct connection between form-based code and social justice. It seems to me that, uh, if, if social justice is what we're trying to accomplish and that's what the town board wants to do, you don't need a form-based code. You could do that with you, with Euclidian, uh, zoning as well and just tweak what we have. So I, I don't, I didn't follow that logic that it was the form-based code that is the, the flag here that's gonna make the difference. And that's kind of a secondary issue for me. For me, it was, um, I, I thought it got to the point where we, we start, um, getting into politics and the policy and preaching to the town board. And I, you know, we may all agree with this and, and perhaps we write a separate memo. Um, and if folks are uncomfortable with it, maybe it's, uh, just some folks write a memo. I don't know. Uh, but to me, this, um, this stood out. Um, and, um, from my standpoint, uh, I don't support it because I don't think it's consistent with, with our charge and what we were supposed to be doing in terms of looking as planners. looking as planners, um, at, at the form based code. I know there's another alternative.
I agree. I mean, we're talking about, you know, projects that are going to, uh, the preponderance right now is going to be smaller. You know, you know, apartments and that I, if I understand correctly from, you know, what transpired with the town board that, you know, that, you know, one of the, the, the two things that they were thinking about, well, gee, you know, older people who don't have that much money and they want to stay in town, they could use a smaller apartment. So that's an underserved group. You know, and the same thing with younger couples coming in, uh, whatever their ethnicity or background or whatever, they would like rooms. You know, the, you know, apartments that would, that would work for them. But I find that, that, um, while it ends nicely, this, this report by, uh, I, what's his name? Kazik or something like that? You know, from NYU. You know, this is, it's a really good history, you know, for things that happened 60 and 50 years ago. It's not so good as to what's happened in the last, you know, four or five years, you know, where we've been, you know, with other communities been putting in, uh, affordable housing. And, you know, if you read it quickly, uh, you know, the last sentence in, uh, Kazik's work, it says, indeed, historically, many communities originally enacted this low density thing to entrench racial segregation. I've lived here for 40 years and I haven't seen any such thing. Now you can argue 40 years isn't that historical. And maybe he's referring back to the 1960s and the 1970s, which he has lots of references for. So I, I was, I was taken aback by that. And, and so I, I, I think we say it later that, you know, we want, you know, affordable housing, uh, you know, you know, town employee housing, uh, type of thing. Uh, in, in, in any, you know, in, in any appropriate way that, that is deemed, you know, appropriate. So I have, I, I agree with, with Bob and, and, but I have the, the other issues that I, I just said, I mean, when you get down to the end of it, is, you know, it's, you talk about a brave steps towards equity. Uh, let's just deal with this. We could do something that's a brave step to echo what, what Tom just said. It seems like we're trying to be the town board. And I don't know that we should be trying to do that.
Tom?
Well, I, I've, uh, Eldad, I just have real problems with, I mean, the whole, to sort of take the sort of, uh, global view about this, uh, this movement and the principles that it's trying to, uh, it's trying to embed in our society, uh, to essentially legalize, make, make it legally necessary. I just have a huge problem with it. I, I think that the, the quote from this guy is just full of logical fallacies. I mean, one after the other, after the other. It's just, it's, to me, it's just, it's just nonsense. And I, I, it's disturbing to me that there is actually so much nonsense and so much lack of true historical perspective on this when they cite historical perspective. That it's, it's astonishing to me and it's so politicized that you can't really get at a logical. It's hard to get at a, at a logical, um, comeback. Because it's a, it's a political thing now. It's, it's not a matter of, of, you know, logical discussion. I mean, to, to, to make the statement that, that, uh, that large lot zoning. What's the statement here? Large lot zoning? I, I can't find it, uh, right now, but large lot zoning is the cause of social inequity. That it restricts people from a, a disadvantaged class to live on large lots is just pure nonsense. I mean, I'll take you to parts of this country where there's large lot zoning and tons of disadvantaged people live there in poor communities on large lots. It's just nonsense. And it's, it's hard to put this out with that kind of a over and over and over again, these statements that are, that are, you know, it's like saying, well, since this happened here, therefore it happened everywhere. That's called a fallacy of composition, right? That part of the whole must, if it's true for part of the whole, it must be true for the whole. It's just, it's just not true. And the biggest one is that just because, uh, white wealthy people uh, live in some of these communities, which are the communities, they're the communities that are targeted by this movement. Just because people live there, therefore they are the cause of this problem. Just that's correlation as opposed, you know, that implies causation and it just, it's just not true. And there is this, there is this notion, I think, that it really embedded in it, and sometimes it's vocalized and sometimes it's not, but it's there. Is that these are rich people who are only concerned about their, who are primarily concerned about the value of their real estate. And they are afraid that the value of their real estate is going to diminish if they let these other people, the other, and in particular, over and over again, it pops up, you know, black people and people of color. That, that what's going to happen is that these people are afraid their property values are going to diminish and that that's a bad thing. All they care about is money. And that's just the, first of all, it's an insult on the face of it, assuming that because I'm saying this, I'm not racist, but if these other people are racist, I wouldn't do this, but these other people would. Well, what other people? Right? Are we, it, it seems to me that what we're implying here is that the good people in this town, and I've lived here for 30 years, that the good people in this town are promoting racial injustice, purposely promoting racial injustice. And, uh, the hidden message here is it, is it we're racist? And I know for a fact that this is going to be, this is part of the argument because it happened on Conifer. And, you know, Bob Kirk wrote, I'm sure remembers this, Dick, I don't know, I don't remember if you were part of the board then. But the, the, the planning board had real problems with Conifer. Not because it was affordable housing, but because of the location that it was in did not meet the proper standards of affordable housing. And that's why we pushed back on it. But there is this, there is this meme going around that, you know, the planning board, it was raised in a, in a, in a public meeting recently that the planning board is racist because they were against Conifer. I, I just don't think that this is, first of all, just against the movement entirely. And it's hard for me to understand how somebody is a proponent of planning and zoning to say that, well, okay, but we're going to throw zoning out completely. You know, Bob, you made the statement that we could maybe accommodate some of these things with, uh, with what's the term, uh, Euclidian zoning. But in fact, the, the, the notion behind exclusionary, uh, zoning and actually Joe Biden's thing that he's coming up with. They are given the authority for developers to come in and completely throw zoning out in favor of this one particular, this one particular group. So the, the actual consequences here would be, actually, we don't need a form based code. We shouldn't have a form base code in the interest of this objective. And that, uh, we shouldn't have any codes at all in the interest of this objective. The community does not have a right to shape itself. And these people moved here, uh, because they like it here. They moved here because they could, uh, raise families here. They moved here, yes, because they could make an investment in real estate and that's the biggest investment people make. And that's a source of their family wealth. And that's not to be snubbed, that's not to be sneered at. That's actually should be honored. And to suggest that these people are, are doing this because they wanted to get away from black people. They wanted to get away from poor people. You know, I, I, you know, I've done a lot of work around the world and I've done so much work uh, for more work than anybody can imagine for people of color around the planet. And one thing I, I could suggest to you is that I don't care what color a person is. If they could move into this town, when they move into this town, they, I, 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 I bet my house on it, they have the exact same feeling about preserving the qualities of this town that the white people do who live here. So it's not a racial issue. It really isn't. And it's not a zoning issue. And the Supreme Court actually ruled back in 1975 that in fact, the condition that prevents or, or, or makes difficult for somebody to move of lower economic status to move into a neighborhood of higher economic status is not zoning. Zoning is neutral. It's neutral. It's the economic condition of the person who wants to move into that area. That's the, that's the key factor. And if you want to solve that problem, you solve the problem of the economic condition of that person. So the whole thing is just to me, uh, forgive me, uh, Eldad, I know that we disagree about this. But I mean, I'm very, very, um, I'm very disturbed that, that I really don't want any of this to actually be in the document. I can't support, really, there's so many statements in here that are to me that are, are just, uh, and I get back to, to, I, I don't know whether it was, I think it was Dick or I don't know where Bob said. We can't behave like the town board because we're not the town board. This is a matter of, of serious matter. I'm not saying it's not a serious matter. I totally agree. It's a serious matter. Should it be raised? Yes. Uh, I think it should be raised in another venue, uh, by another, by another, uh, by another, uh, what do I want? Another vehicle. But I really don't think it belongs in here. I actually think it's, it, it implies insults. Now, maybe they're not intended. I'm sure they're not intended. But it implies insults here to the town, the town board and the people of this town. I, I think it's a mistake.
So thank you, I mean, all of you for that. Um, I, uh, no, 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 there's no need to apologize to me. Um, I want to say just a couple of things. I, I, I'm not interested in actually, um, arguing with, uh, with you all or with you, Tom, and trying to convince you, um, of, of the validity of this, of this argument, uh, of the, of some of these concepts. I mean, I actually am interested in that, but another time, this, this is not, this is not necessarily the, the setting for that. Um, I, I, I'll say that, um, but the only thing I do want to just say is, um, I, um, first of all, when it comes to Conifer, obviously I wasn't on the board. And I don't know anyone personally who thinks that that is a good location for any kind of housing. Um, so.
Right. It's a livability issue. It really is.
Period. Affordable market rate, whatever. Uh, that, that's, and so, and I, but I wasn't around for those fights or I wasn't involved, uh, with, with any of those discussions. That said, um, I, I want to be clear also that I, I certainly am, am not accusing you or anyone here of being racist individually. But there, you know, there is such a thing as systemic racism. And so that is a, a concept that is the, you know, the idea of being a racist versus, uh, participating in a, in a, in a system that is, you know, that perpetuates, uh, you know, racism or segregation or economic segregation is, is a different thing. Again, I don't want to get into that argument, but to be clear, I'm certainly not accusing you or anyone uh, on this board or, uh, uh, an elected or appointed or, uh, employee of the town as being racist, to be clear. I will also say that, um, one of my idols is a historian named Howard Zinn. Used to teach at BU. I was a, a little bit of a, of a groupie of Howard Zins. I would follow him around and just like, you know, watch him lecture as often as I could. I, I was in, in Boston, uh, for a good part of the nineties. And, um, his memoirs, which I highly recommend reading are titled, You Can't Be Neutral on a Moving Train, which is a, a phrase that I think about all the time. Even just the title of his memoirs, but the whole memoirs are absolutely worth reading. It's, it's, it's an easy read, super interesting. He's a fascinating, was a fascinating individual and also an extremely nice man. Uh, just from a personal standpoint, but, um, so it's just that concept that you can't be neutral on a moving train. It's just, it, it rings true in this argument and in general, um, to me. Um, so all that said, I am not surprised that you all, um, uh, are not comfortable with this. I get that completely. And we can have conversations one day when we get to meet in person and have a cup of coffee or a beer, uh, or something, uh, to discuss these concepts because they're important. Uh, they're important to me and I think they're important to our town. And, uh, I just want to know how you all want to handle this going forward. The thought was that I would write something, um, and either, you know, we would edit it together and as someone that feel comfortable or be at a point like we are now, which is, this section seems to be, um, not acceptable to you all, which again is, is a choice and is fine. But I would love to submit something like this and I just want to know if there's precedent, how to handle it, if there's like a side thing, uh, that, uh, it, you know, it could come from me and or anyone else that would be willing to, you know, sign on to, to that. I mean, how to handle that? Um, I guess I, I don't, I don't know how that works. I mean, maybe you all have some idea.
Well, I, I don't think we've, uh, had something like this before, but we've spoken about this before and I think it's, it's critically important that you feel free to, I, I think the sense, by the way, of the, of, of the four of us here, that the three of us do not feel that we want to include this in our documents to the town board. So I think that's clear. So what do we do from there? Uh, as far as I'm concerned, um, you know, I think we could certainly, um, even, even as a statement that, look, as a, as a planning board member and also a member of the community, I wanted to, uh, get my opinion on, on this matter. I think it's critically important to get that out to the town board. I think that probably is the best mechanism. Uh, I don't know if we, uh, I, I suppose we could, I mean, attach it with ours and just say, this is, you know, Eldad felt very strongly about this. Uh, I, I would not cast any aspersions on it, you know, from us saying, well, we don't. But just say, one member of the planning board really felt strongly about this issue. And these are his opinions and his thoughts on, on this, this issue.
If I may, if I may offer a suggestion because Conan, um, you know, I'm sure has opinions about this. It'd be interesting to hear where she falls. I do think that, that, that as planning board members, Eldad and let's say Conan agrees with this as well. I do not know. But I, I think it's worth sending a memo as two members of the planning board who felt this issue was critical. You know, to be presented to the, to the town board as an opinion on the form based code. And then, you know, do it in a memo format. You can either, you know, do it together or even yourself. I, I don't know about attaching it, um, unless you're going to qualify it if a majority of you do not feel it should be submitted to them.
I agree with Sabrina. Uh, I think that's a very good point. That I think it's important to remember, uh, keep in mind, I think that we are in the silly season. The, the elections are coming up. And, um, I think that, that we, I think that we want to be very, very careful about the documentation that comes out of the planning board, that it be really, I think, strictly adhere to, you know, what we really, uh, are tasked to do. I am certain that this memo is going to get circulated. I don't know how widely circulation is going to be, but it's going to be read. And, um, to the extent that, um, it sort of serves one side or the other, um, one side of the other is, is if they think it's useful, they're going to use it. And this, this language, uh, in the social justice section is just the kind of language that I think could set a lot of people off. And so I agree that maybe it's a, it's a memo that, uh, Eldad, you and Conan maybe want to work on and polish up and send it as separately as two members of the, uh, of the planning board on a social issue that you think requires attention. And I think that, um, you know, we, I would support that as a conversation that the town board has, and I would be happy to be, you know, invited to be part of that conversation.
I don't think that this is a, I, I don't think my understanding of the way that this is written, this is written in support of the form based code in that it is rising up to, uh, addressing exclusionary zoning. So it's not about. So it's not about an issue, it's about the town board making the right decisions in 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 looking at legislation that will help address the what is perceived to be impacts of exclusionary zoning.
Well, you're right, but I think in order that that the the premise there is that this whole issue is something that the town board supports and that as a consequence, we're looking at the form-based code to decide whether it supports it or not. And so I don't think the premise has been established. I think it's an issue that still needs to be looked at to decide whether the form-based code should even apply to this. And so I think it's a separate issue myself. I think it's separate from the form-based code.
I think it's sep- I think it's separate from, you know, the planning board. It's, we don't, I don't see that we have the prerogative to, you know, to send something like this to the town board saying, hey, you better, you know, better get going on this type of thing. I I think it it is an issue. I mean, it'd be wonderful if we we could actually bust some children up from, you know, the crappy schools in the city and have them educated up here, you know, where our schools at least have been open much more than New York City for sure. Those kids, they're suffering. They don't even know they're suffering in many cases. It's just not fair what the teachers' union is doing. But I I see our thing is is a form-based code is on how to build things in a reasonable way. What people go into it is more, much more on the side of the town board where there would be, you could set up allocations for, you know, all sorts of groups, Asians, you know, African Americans, whatever in in the whole thing. And and it, there's neat, there's a need that has to be, you know, addressed. And this, the approach here, I just think is what I said before. It has a lot of, it's based on a lot of historical things that that did not get done in the sixties and the seventies and the early eighties. And and now we're doing it, and one can argue we're doing baby steps when we're doing ten percent. But it's certainly infinitely more than was done, you know, sixty years ago.
Can I make a suggestion? Just in the interest of time and and moving forward, it sounds like that a majority of the board would not be in favor of including this section in your memo back to the town board. Given that, obviously, you know, Eldad, you you know, you or anyone else, any other member of the planning board has the right as an individual member of of, you know, the Newcastle community to to submit comments to the town board. And I think this would be, you know, the, you know, something that would be ripe for for the town board discussion and for their their ears and eyes.
So I I I hear that, but and I have attended some of the public forum forums and have made comments on 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 some of these issues, but the purpose of writing this and proposing that it be included in this memo, although I understand that it, there there is not support for it to be included in the memo, is I would like for this to be as sort of official as possible in the sense that if it could be appended to the memo where where it says like that the these people on the town board agree, you know, feel this, and then the following people, and if it's just me, it's just me. I don't I don't know where Kanon falls on this. Then to be included as, I I would love for it to be as close to the memo as possible, as close as you guys are comfortable with, so that it is and 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 Tom, you're right. I mean, what you call the silly season is 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 probably a fair name. And undoubtedly, everything in this memo is at at the very least fair game. Will it be picked apart and circulated? Maybe if it's to 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 promote someone's best interests. You know, again, I don't want to get into some of the the kind of the the back and forth. I actually don't think that this is any more or less political than any other section in this document. It may feel that way. But it is also very much at home in the discussion of planning and zoning very much, but again.
I I I agree. I agree with that, Eldad. I really agree with it, and I think, I think, I mean, as I understand it, I think your position is this is an opportunity to to use the form-based code. So it very is is very much pertinent on the form-based code. So from that standpoint, I support the notion of having it go not just as a private letter, but as something that a planning board member or two planning board members or two and a half planning board members who sign on with different parts of it thought was important to to issue. So I I I understand what I think I understand that from your standpoint as a planner, you're looking at this as an opportunity to leverage the form-based code for for other things than than what we've looked at initially and what what we think what the charge was. So I think it's very fair. I think it's very fair to put in and you know, I, as I said from the get-go, I didn't want to argue about the the content. I just thought it was from our standpoint politically, I think from our standpoint, from our charge, I thought it was just for me, not the right thing to do, and I thought it stood out. I have no problem with being a separate attachment because I think that would be appropriate.
Can I can I make just one suggestion, Sabrina, before we we move on from that? So would would a majority of the board feel comfortable having this as an addendum to your memo with the sort of the 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 lead-in that a majority of the board felt that this was, you know, not speaking to the content of of the statements made in this, that in the addendum, but just that the the topic area was outside of the charge of the planning board with respect to this particular memo commenting on the form-based code.
Well, if it's outside of the charge of the of the of the planning board with respect to our response to the form-based code, what's it doing anywhere near the memorandum on the on our comments to the form-based code? I mean, I I I I understand we're trying to sort of, you know, come together and have a kumbaya moment here. And I totally respect Eldad and Kanon for their beliefs. I mean, I have no problem.
Poor Kanon, she's being lumped in with with this.
Guy who wears tattoos about this.
I happen to know that Kanon is a big proponent of affordable housing. Now, she hasn't seen this language. Okay, that's fine. Let's not get into that. She will have a chance to speak up, and that's great, and she she should, and she will. But let me get to my point. I don't think that this really, that that this, I don't think it belongs anywhere near our comments on the form-based code. I do, however, think that it is perfectly appropriate for the planning board to raise issues in planning and in community development that the that we believe that the town board may not be aware of that should be addressed. I think that that is a perfectly responsible thing to do. So I don't think that, however, that this is the right vehicle for that. And I think it's a it's a side issue, but it's not a tant, it's not necessarily follow-on from the form-based code discussion. So I I still am against, I actually have a big problem with the content. I mean, I just have a big problem with the content.
I agree. I think it's, it comes across as saying that you know, all of you people in town, you're basically supporting exclusionary kinds of activities for housing. And there's a lot of stuff that if you're, if you don't read it carefully, comes across to me as as negative.
So 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 I'm going to strike it from this memo. If, you know, I don't, I don't know, you know, at one point we were talking about a memo to go along with this memo. I'm not sure where we are with that right now, but in, you know, it's nine thirty and we need to get through the rest of the memo. I can hold it.
Okay, well.
Or we can delete it.
I'll give one more example is that, you know, we have, there's a statement and it says, we should, we have an opportunity to be brave. Well, we have that comes across negative to me also. But there's no question that we have to build on the affordable housing approach that we've taken up to this point and as best as reasonable or appropriate, expand it. That's a different approach.
Already in the in the last section, I think that's in the affordable, isn't there affordable housing?
Exactly. I I was gonna gonna say that Dick, I support that concept, but we do have an affordable housing section which which which, you know, talks about that. I mean, this this section doesn't focus on affordable housing or you know, low-income communities exclusively. It's more about kind of what it's about. But I guess my my question to you is to you all is I'd like it to be sent out as official as possible. If it can't be part of the this specific memo, then to what extent are you comfortable? Now, Tom has said that he's, he doesn't want anywhere near this memo. I get that. Even though it won't have, you know, your name and signature on it. But
I see where you're going. Yeah, I think if if you're, if you are asking whether you could send it out, you know, either with Kanon or without her, you know, however, she sends her own, as a member of the planning board, yeah, I think that's perfectly appropriate. I have no problem with that.
Okay, so because, you know, when I have spoken at the public forums before, I have said, look, I'm Eldad, I'm on the planning board, I'm not here as the planning board speaking. I'm here speaking as a resident in, you know, on New Stat Lane or whatever.
On this issue in direct in direct communication with the town board, I think it's perfectly appropriate for you to speak as a member of the planning board.
But it's very careful to make sure that you're being clear that you're not speaking for a majority of the the planning board.
I'm totally okay with that. I think it's
I'm okay with that. I mean, it it would be better if Al Albet said that, you know, hey, I'm on the planning board, but I'm speaking as, you know, a, you know, private citizen with planning background. You know, that's a separate memo.
Bob, how do you feel?
I I feel that Eldad and I should identify himself as a member of the planning board and Kanon, if she wants to join in on this 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 memo. So I think that's perfectly fine. I think it's, I think it's expected. I think it's expectable. And I think it's appropriate. So again, I think I think this should be stricken. I think this should be stricken. And frankly, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you know, I would even give consideration that Eldad, his his letter could be written on, you know, our planning board stationery. Just say, this is a planning board member who feels strongly about this and has written this to to send to the town board.
Yes, I agree.
Eldad, we will, we will format the memo for you. If you want to change some wording in it to address kind of that preamble, I'll give you the opportunity to do that. I will send you a draft document tomorrow.
Okay, great. Can I just say two things? One, thank you. I'm glad we got to where we got to, because that's that that pleases me, right? To be able to, again, submit this. It is an issue that that is important to me, that I think is important and to be able to do it in the official capacity as town planning board member, I think is that's that was my goal, hoping to get as many to come along as possible, but I appreciate that. And two, just Sabrina, just quickly, you know, I I I wrote it, so I'm I'm comfortable with it. But again, the comments that I made before was just that Jennifer had made a couple edits that she felt more comfortable with, said either eliminate these two two sentences or incorporate these edits. I'm more, I would prefer to incorporate those edits, and I I understand why she made those suggestions and and so I prefer to bring those two sentences back in and if
I will do so.
If you're not sure, are you sure what I'm talking, if not sure?
I know exactly what you're talking about. I'll bring it back in and I will send you a draft memo of that. And I would ask that you speak to Kanon to see if she wants to join you or not. Because I know she did have comments. She was reviewing the material today. And just give her that that opportunity to voice an opinion.
I I've had a couple of, during the meeting here, I've had a couple of side notes with Kanon, who, by the way, has got some, it's a terrific situation where fortunately she was able to rescue one of her family members out of India with all this COVID. They have to quarantine. So it's it's a wonderful thing, but I've been going back and forth with her. And so far, she's indicated that early changes or early comments were basically word smithing sort of along the lines of our earlier ones. And basically, we we hit the ones that she wanted. I'm not so sure, you know, obviously, she'll speak as she wants to on on this issue. So I think we're we're set with that. So we'll take it out of this memo. Eldad will refine his, get it set up, talk with Kanon in case she wants to join with all of it, part of it. And you may even want to, after you polish it, send it around in case, you know, you trick Tom into a section that he likes.
I just want to say one real quick thing. It, I think, and I have to remind myself of this every once in a while. This is a five-member board. And we represent a hundred percent of the families in this community. So you actually represent twenty percent of the people in this community. And your voice matters a lot. And so and it, and your voice belongs within the planning board when you choose to do so. So I, that's why I think it definitely should be on the planning board stationary. And that you should feel confident in your feelings about this and that because of the of the people you represent, and that's what you're here to do. The same for Kanon as well.
I appreciate that.
I have one. I have a question for Eldad. Did you, did you read the latest article that Cassick put out? Housing?
I I have not.
Take a look at that.
Where is it? I'm sorry, where where is it, Dick?
Pardon me?
Where where is the article?
The article is on NYU.
It's it's another Furman Center.
March of this year. And it's it's about sexual housing. The impact, it's really kind of confusing to me, but I would love it if you could help me understand it.
I'll read it. I mean, I am, I hope you all, you know, I linked to that that Furman Center study on exclusionary housing, and I hope you all will read that study if you haven't already. I thought it was interesting. That's that's the only reason I quoted it. I thought it was, it's relevant and
Can I urge us to move on, please?
I have good news that I'm, you know, the header says it's, we're on page
Page three.
Actually, three of seven, so there is hope.
Does there, does anyone have any changes, any suggestions for page three?
No.
No, I don't either.
Do you all still see the screen? Because I've gone back and forth a couple of times.
Yeah, so we're we're okay with page three because we have really gone through this a lot before. So page three looks good. I'm fine with page four as is as well. I think it's, we've got some really good stuff in here.
Is everyone else okay with it?
I am.
Yes.
Okay. Page five, again, I'm I'm fine with it.
Same here.
Dick, Tom?
I I'm okay. I I don't have any comments. I don't think I had any other comments.
I have a comment on page six, Dick, because it says proscribed in the first bullet instead of prescribed.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh, proscribed as opposed to prescribed. Yes, thank you for reminding me.
Yes, and then down below in the height and bulk in the second paragraph, it should not have the apostrophe. It's it should be, it's supporting EIS. So no apostrophe there. And I think it should
Wait, wait a minute.
It's that line.
Oh, go to the right on that line. Yep, right there.
Thank you.
And it should also, I think, be implied, not implies, on the next line. And in the next
What do you want it to be?
Implying. So it's a plural.
Base code.
And it's supporting EIS. So there was a conjunctive clause, so it should be plural, so it should be implying.
Yeah, and there's a comma after IE.
Just why? There you go.
And then next paragraph that starts with
Bucolic, it needs a comma.
Oh, okay.
In that little parentheses.
I I don't read closely when I see bucolic.
Where's it need a comma after IE? There you go.
So Sabrina, on the second to last line, comprehensive plan is unrealistic, comma, that one can't have both. I would insert the word that after the comma.
One can't.
Conclusion, in that, it should really, in that, one can't have both. I would put in and that. One can't have both.
Yeah, that's good.
Put a semicolon there.
That's more expensive. Anyone else? Anyone else on that page? And page seven, again, when we get to again, when we get to housing, my comment would be, again, in that very first line, the comprehensive plan seeks to provide a wider range of housing alternatives.
Yep.
And again, instead of diverse groups, I would again say underserved groups.
So I, I, you know, I wish Conan was here because this is the only section that I have any, any substantive, you know, comments on, or actually they're not comments, they're questions.
Sure.
I don't really understand what we're saying here. You know, like, you know, what's the takeaway here? We're saying that, you know, the, the North Greeley section should be a pilot, but I, I guess I don't really get it. And I actually don't love, I mean, I, I'll accept, but I don't love the, the middle paragraph, the backend of it where it says to find the acceptable, acceptable density, public workshops could be held. They could be, but that's not what we're doing. And, and are we really suggesting public workshops? And we believe that 3D models of different structures should be presented in the test case. I mean, are, are we, are we really asking for that also? Because that's not, I don't know. I, 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 so, but I know you all didn't, didn't write this. And so I'm not really sure, sure what we're saying in this section.
Some of those comments were Canaan, Canaan, so I changed them a little to make them shorter.
Unless I'm mistaken, El Dad, I think you could have a good point here. Let me see if I can get this right. That the decision whether to have diverse housing, wider range of housing alternatives, wider range of housing alternatives is not dependent on 3D models.
Right.
It's really not necessarily a physical design problem. It's really a, a, a housing-type provision problem. And so maybe what, what this leaps into is actually physical town planning in this paragraph. And I think that we did say that we supported the notion of using the North Greeley area as a test case, but not just for housing. I think that it could be a test case for the whole form-based code.
Right.
So can I make a proposal to strike this middle paragraph?
No, I, you know what I, what I would suggest actually is notice that this section doesn't have bullets at the end. So what we could do is take some of that information out and, and put in bullets, you know, should we consider some 3D models and et cetera? And, and I, I, I agree that the, the second paragraph needs some work and maybe it's, it's just the way it's done. And we should really ask the questions to the town board in bullets because we're missing bullets here. And those are the kinds of things I think that would be appropriate for questions for bullets.
Yeah, people will read the questions more than they will the text, so.
Absolutely. You're very correct, I think.
Yeah, the bullets are the takeaway. So.
But we have to be careful, we have to be careful on the wording of these bullets as well so that we don't take bullets.
Yeah, we don't want to take bullets.
So this is, this is an area, El Dad, that, that you and Canaan could, you know, come up with, you know, what the appropriate sort of takeaway is for this in the bullet form.
I think Sabrina's getting the gist of it right here. That could really be very helpful.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, Conan wrote, I, I think she, she drafted this section. Maybe, Dick, you edited it a little bit, but at least that's my understanding. And so I just, I, I mean, I come back to my original comment on the section, which is I don't actually know what we're saying here. And aside from that, the, the North Greeley section should be a pilot, but you know, to, to what end, I'm, I'm not entirely sure. So I guess I, but making these bullets makes actually a lot of sense to me in that we're just going to be, you know, ask, asking questions. Should experts be brought in, you know, should?
That's good.
It's, it's fine, I guess.
And can they explore the financial constructs that would make such housing feasible?
Yes, that, that is important for sure. But I guess we'll, we'll have to, you know, Canaan had apparently comments on, on the entirety of the document and perhaps she'll have comments on the rewording of her section.
So, so rather than fool around with this now, just leaving the changes that are here right now, let's wait till Canaan says. Hopefully she'll send something tomorrow. If not.
If anyone else has any thoughts on it too, if you want to play with it, then just get it out.
Right. I, I will play with it tomorrow and get it out to everybody and and ask for people to get me comments back by the, by the end of the week, maybe. I don't know.
Good progress.
Yeah, I think we're, I mean, I think we're, we can smell the finish line here. We fixed up this last section and I think we're set. I mean, I, I really, I'd love to get this out of here by the close of business this week. Again, Canaan's home quarantining, but perhaps she can get the stuff to Sabrina and Felicia very quickly. And we can get this out.
Let me, I will call Canaan tomorrow and speak with her about this section in particular.
Tell her that we all wish her well and with her family.
That's unanimous.
Yes.
Good progress. Now we have to go back to the executive meeting, right? The executive session.
I am not going to join you for that as much as I would love to.
You know, we have to have a, we have to have a, like a, a remote bar car, virtual bar car. At a certain hour, you know?
I, I think Bob will wake him back up so Bob can join back in.
Oh, that's cruel. That is really cruel, Sabrina.
Is he still there?
I don't know. From the sound of it, I don't think so. Here he comes.
Oh, good.
I'm still here.
A separate link that was emailed to you.
I emailed you a separate link and I also put it in chat. And what I have to do is when you end this, actually.
Yeah, don't end this, Pam. Can you?
No, you know, I can lock this out. Yeah, I can lock this out so you can stay here.
Oh, okay.
Are we staying?
What I can do is I can stop the recording. I will lock this session so no one can, else can get in but you all.
Okay. And then we'll have to start recording again when we're done with the executive session so that we can come back on the record ending the executive session and adjourning the meeting and referencing that, that no decisions were made.
You can do that. What I can do is, yes, what I can do is I can stop the recording now, which I will do. Are you, you're ending the session. Make the motion to end.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? All right. I think we're set. By the way, Tom, you raised that issue about Mount Pleasant. It will be something that Clinton is researching. I spoke to him today. So we'll, we'll hear about it and talk about it the next time around. He's, he has, he's still looking for some documents and materials.
Thank you for that.
So I just want to let you know that. But, yep. Otherwise, is there a motion to close the meeting?
Oh, sorry. Before we close, we, we did just come back from executive session for advice of counsel and no decisions were made, no actions were taken during that executive session.
Okay, thank you. It depends. Is there a motion, is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Again, thanks very much, guys. I thought we did some really good work tonight.